First off, we have a financial report. Our wonderful treasurer.
Accountant.
Accountant, treasurer. What is it?
Accountant.
Jeff's the treasurer.
But what's her email say, treasurer?
She's using...
We won't speak about what my email says.
It's not an email, is it? Is there a treasurer?
In any event, the lady sitting right here.
No, let's settle it.
So, just a couple of quick financial highlights. Talk about the current year, tax collection. So, as of Monday, because that's everything that's cleared the bank, we were at forty-two percent collected. But in the past few days, we've received another over four hundred and thirty thousand dollars because we got a lot on the mortgage checks. So, we're up to like one, almost one point two in tax collection. So, that's good. Other than that, this year, we've only been in three weeks. There's not much going on. We're gonna have the roof done. We weren't able to put that all in last year's budget. So, that's the only big thing coming that I know about right now. As for last year, attached are preliminary year-end reports. They're unaudited. The auditors will be here the last week of July for two or three days. The AUD to the state is also due on July thirty-first, so I'll have that done and completed. I don't anticipate the auditors making any big changes to these statements, but you never know. And there are definitely some bills that are attributable to May that haven't been paid yet. Right now, we have twenty-eight thousand, and then I estimate like maybe another thirty-five on the higher side. And that's just for the general fund. So, with that, I tried to do fund balance estimates because that's, I know, a topic of concern, or interest, rather. So, for the general fund, I'm thinking like seven hundred thousand. I tried to go through in-depth all the accounts over the past, you know, two days, make sure we're not missing any big charges, been reaching out to vendors. There's a couple engineering bills, couple attorney bills, but nothing super large that'll be coming in. The reasons that the general fund has so much of a fund balance this year is a couple things. We have Butterfield permits. That's twenty-seven, over twenty thousand dollars just in Butterfield that came through that wasn't budgeted for that high, on top of the building department doing the twenty-three that we budgeted for. They did another twenty-seven.
So, when you say the seven hundred, that's what we're rolling over this year also? Or, um, last year, I should say?
Mm-hmm. And that seven hundred also takes into account the hundred and ninety-two thousand that she set aside to do municipal repairs. So, after that, it's seven hundred.
Oh, after that, it's seven hundred.
We also had a Main Street project complete and finalized back in March. We had forty-one thousand dollars come in with the final payments. That was never accrued from, from the beginning of the project, that fifty-two thousand with B C H I and everything. Also, for health insurance, there was big savings there, almost fifty thousand dollars due to the types of enrollment we had. I always assume that people are, new employees would take family plans because it's most expensive, and we had two that opted out. Personal services, I myself was out for four months, so that was some savings. Highway department, attrition and turnover has some savings there. Even with the anticipated attorney bills that are coming in for May, we didn't use them as much. There's like thirty-five thousand dollar savings there. We never really use our emergency accounts. And storm drains, I thought that we were gonna be able to do two big storm drains, and we did one and a half little ones. So, that was the big savings, some sidewalk savings. Little things all add up, but here, those are the really big things that are true to that, you know, two hundred and eighty thousand.
So, when we roll over, though, we, you know, it's not like those, those, uh, those projects went away, so we just have to...
Like, some things that we thought were gonna happen last year for May didn't happen, so that's nine thousand dollars for this roof. Some of the engineering costs for Pitt and Garrow that they didn't get to do yet, that'll be in next year.
So, we can go, since that money that we rolled over went into the general fund, we can go to the general fund?
The fund balance.
That's how, or the fund balance, that's how we'll pay for those?
At the end of the year, if we need to, yes. We can take it out of the fund balance.
But during the year, how do you work it then?
During the year, we move money around among funds, and then at the end of the year, if we're over the whole budget, then I'll take it from the fund balance if we had to.
But does that depend on if, if we did like a thirty thousand dollar project, would you still do it that way, or would you do that, take that out of the fund balance?
Depends on what it was. If it's not chips related, and we have bids and everything, and we know it's gonna be thirty, I would do a budget adjustment for that.
Oh, you would? Okay.
But like, you know, five thousand for the initial engineering, nine thousand, or whatever, I wouldn't. But if, you know, say you wanted to do a...
Is that harder for you to keep track of this stuff, though? No?
I have, it's all in the account. So, the expense will hit the account that it's supposed to, whether it's a highway project, water project, roof. And then I just watch it throughout the year. Water fund will probably be about five ninety, and sewer fund, two ten.
Can you go ahead and, I'll be great if you go ahead and one of those, can we talk about the general fund? On the second page, what was the ninety-nine thousand? Second line?
That was the firehouse roof.
Okay, and that was not paid for in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen?
It was. So, we were gonna pay for it with fund balance, but we had enough savings from not spending and having unanticipated revenue that we didn't need to use it in nineteen ninety. And that's why it goes in and out.
Okay. And then, what is the fund balance reserve for nineteen ninety? Two thousand nineteen, but what are the municipal building repairs?
That was, we decided that we didn't know what projects. We're gonna do engineering on several, several items throughout the village, the firehouse engineering, garden, and the wall. And then we were gonna decide which projects needed the most attention and how much they would cost. So, we set aside almost two hundred thousand for that purpose. But it wasn't earmarked specifically.
But it's still in the, uh, fund balance? Okay. Sorry, I stopped you.
No, no, it's not. That's it. Water and sewer are pretty much self-sustaining funds.
What is the ninety-four thousand for the water fund reserve balance?
Dam engineering.
What?
Dam engineering.
Ah.
If we get moving on this. Like, we had eighty budgeted for this year, but we didn't do that much engineering on it, so it depends on how the phases go.
Okay. And for the sewer fund, the twenty-five thousand?
Um, it's engineering more for infiltration and...
I N I?
Yes.
Did we budget anything for the sludge compressor device that will get us from less than one percent solids to significantly...
If we purchased those devices, they are significant, so we may have to ban for them.
Okay.
Like, over three hundred thousand, from my assumption, from what I hear, even maybe in the close of four or five.
Now, the twenty thousand, it comes out of water, each water and sewer, and goes into the general fund. Is that done because the, the expenses from the general fund, such as your time and Jeff's time, are accounted for by that twenty thousand dollar transfer?
Uh, that's supposedly what it's for, like, that's, that idea is that the sewer and water fund, like, Ann's not charged to it, but she does a lot of water and sewer.
Right, she does a lot of the water bills, the sewer bills, right.
Covers, I guess, you could say like indirect costs, like, when we're talking about like the state money and stuff, that's the best way. But yeah, that's what it's for. And then a little bit, you could use it for that, or if the water and sewer fund are doing really well and the general fund's not, you could do a transfer for that way. But we use it for indirect costs.
Yeah, I see that the sewer fund, the fund balance...
Yep.
Is up by almost forty thousand dollars. Do you have any insights into why that is the case?
So, we raised rates, knowing that we're gonna have the, um, the E F C ban come through.
Yeah.
We did not have, I carried the short-term financing an extra year so that we didn't have to make a big bond payment.
Okay.
So, the first bond payment would be about thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars. I pushed it a little bit so we can build the fund up.
Gotcha.
Other than fund balance, I mean, the numbers are what they are. Anyone has like individual account questions, they'd be more than happy to answer. If you know an account now, probably can answer about eighty percent of the questions, maybe ninety.
So, in looking at the detail, everything looks like it's paying for itself reasonably well.
Mm-hmm.
Until, and this is such a net, the H D R V application fees do not cover the, um, the revenue from it does not, is less than expected.
Yes.
I was surprised at that. All the, all the other, I'm trying to say, all the other, most of the other lines are pretty even. That one is not. It's a small amount.
Right.
It's a very, very small amount. Should we be looking at increasing the application fee?
I would recommend zoning and planning are at fifty. H D R V is only at thirty. So, we budgeted with the input from the H D R V for forty applications to come in, only based on this number, twenty-eight applications came in, which is roughly two a month instead of three a month.
Uh-huh.
So, that's something that I think next year, we brought it down a little bit, knowing that this year was not on track to hit the budget. But upping it to fifty, I think, makes sense because the other two boards have a fifty-dollar application fee. And I believe the H D R V's thirty dollars was instituted before the fifty dollars of zoning and planning.
And I think they also wanted to keep the fee low so as not to disincent people from making an application to the H D R V. But it's, it's worth a conversation with them to see whether or not they want to adjust it to maybe forty dollars.
They still bring in more applications than the other boards.
I know.
I think they, um, the thought was that they would be busier than they were. So, I don't think, like you said, it's insignificant, really, because it's...
No, it's small.
It's only three hundred and sixty dollars you bring in here.
I think the difference with their board is, is there's, there're gonna be applications for small, for, you know, putting a window in or putting, yeah, versus...
So, then that makes sense to have a lower fee if it's not big projects.
Or maybe there's a way that you can break that up, or if it's a, I don't know, maybe something to ask them. If it's a larger project and it involves, like, some of these involve a number of plans and reviews, and then one might be assigned, so.
Yeah, or a single window, as you pointed out. The income from the sale of recycling materials, it's a testament to Bugsy that this is reci- he kept all the scrap metal and sold it.
Yes, scrap metal.
So, he did a really nice job there. The, I checked the parking meter.
I checked it against Park Pion. It's off by probably about a hundred and twenty dollars due to the timing of the credit card deposits.
But if I look at the gross, it's, the gross is down as we had, as had been projected, it would be down. And I'm trying to find it here. Where is it?
The revenue is up, expense.
Yeah.
Revenue is at seventeen forty-one, A seventeen forty-one.
Yeah, I, I don't expect, I, I think we, did we budget that same amount for two thousand nineteen, twenty?
No, I believe I took it down a little bit.
You brought it down a little bit? Good.
But that's the seasonal, you know, you're guessing, because if you have nicer weather, that number can come right back up.
Good. On the federal aid, on page two, where's that come from?
That's a Main Street project.
It is, okay.
And seventy-five hundred is the mortgage selling fund?
Got it, got it. Nice work to you and Fran for calling back that money. I hope that is a compliment.
Side note, the FEMA Sandy project, finally, we're just waiting for the approval from the audit, and then we'll get the final remaining balance of that.
How much is that?
Probably about twenty-three thousand.
That's nice.
It was owed to us from years ago.
And that was awarded to us for what, or what was our claim on that?
Uh, FEMA gave us the money for redoing the pump station.
Pump station.
And moving it.
After the Sandy, yeah.
Two thousand eleven, right?
Mm-hmm. That's how the, that's working.
So, we've paid for that?
It's paid for, and we're just waiting for money, yeah.
Where are we, like, with heating and gas, you know, vehicle fuel compared to last year?
Gasoline usage is up, but the cost is about the same because of the price that fuel went down. For diesel, I don't have an accurate number because for a few months, I thought the fire department wasn't logging their charts. Bugsy had moved the chart, and the fire department didn't know where he put the chart. So, they have their own chart, and they're gonna be sending it down to me so that I can account for their usage properly, as something, I was like, this isn't matching up. And then heating oil...
Is the mileage, like, up significantly, or is it, is there a reason for that, Dana? This part of the mileage?
Um, highways is up a little bit. Police is about the same. I have a whole summary report that I can email to you by department for the past four years.
I mean, if it is up something that's, I don't know, a flag up, you know?
It's nothing like an abnormal, it doesn't go from like a hundred gallons up to three hundred like it had in the past for a couple months. It's slowly creeping up.
Okay. Well, maybe we should talk about the, the bus trips out of town.
He's gotta return to metal.
That's right. Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Well, he's also had a lot of repairs, and those repairs are done outside of the bench.
But that's good. The, uh, so you were gonna say on heating?
Heating, um, were down a little bit from last year.
It was pretty mild.
Yeah. No major repairs to any heating systems this year.
So, there's nothing else that's of, of note as far as...
No, I tried to hit on like the big accounts.
Right.
Like, the copy machine, we saved eighteen dollars because we didn't make enough colored copies, like, stuff like that's negligible.
My God, those colored copies are gonna drive us to the forehouse.
Jeff Yelson, every time I do this.
See, his yelling saved us eighteen dollars.
But I can't see, well, he redlined something for me. Those corrections, I can't find them.
That's why, you know, if any board members have a department or an account of interest, we'd be more than happy to go over it with them in detail.
Thank you.
Like, I know, like, the fire siren was a hot topic. We didn't replace it, so there were savings there. Even like some parking meter expenses, there's some savings because I anticipated Devo coming out more often like they had in the past, and they didn't have to.
Right.
Little things like that all add up.
Did we budget this new year for a new furnace, a firehouse, or new heating system or something?
No, but we can use that in municipal building repairs if we had to.
I think that was one of the maybe projects.
Right, depending on the pending Pitt and Garrow's evaluation of the entire building.
And the engineers just came back Friday to give another walkthrough, look at the heating and also the floor and the firehouse, yeah. They're working.
Can we put money aside, potentially for that, for the floor repairs and the firehouse?
We did a hundred and ninety-three thousand to be used across the village.
Okay.
But it hasn't been allocated or targeted for any specific project yet.
No, it's just there.
We're all, it's all pending the engineer's opinions.
On the reduction of the, the revenue for the parking meter, does any of that, or does some of that have to do with the fact that we're all credit cards now, and is that fee, is the credit card fee?
No.
No.
No, it's, the volume is down. Yeah, I'm just looking at gross revenue, and a gross revenue is based upon the fee that's charged at the meter, not the net.
Right.
But the gross is...
And that's what you see here, too. I, the gross and then the credit cards are on the expense side.
Right. The weather has been, the weather on the council has been terrible.
You can't forget anywhere, man.
All right, shouldn't have drank all that cough syrup before the meeting.
Michelle, really great rep...
Yeah, I gotta get some paper towels.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Michelle, as always.
Thanks, Michelle. Can we afford paper towels?
Yes, but what we can't afford is toilet paper at the visitor's center.
I wanted to drink that one, too.
What?
Is that course up?
We want a toilet paper every few weeks for that, I think, that's, we're not toilet paper.
Is that broken, then? Do we know where it comes from?
For the Main Street bathroom.
Yeah, okay. I'd be interested in that.
Well, it's on our, the bathroom on the Main Street restrooms, so we can, we can identify daily use, weekend use, whatever.
We need to maybe order...
I think Evan's...
They do, they order by the space.
They have, uh, they have to pay the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just saw that two communities in, across the river have a blacklist getting approval from the state legislature to implement a hotel and motel tax, which also applies to B and B rooms. And that is something, if the legislature is beginning to approve that, that might be something that...
Airbnb or just a conventional bread and breakfast?
Yes, both. It would apply to both. That might be something that we will also look into, that's not...
Any other questions?
No, no.
Okay.
Michelle, thanks for...
Thank you.
Thanks for coming back.
Yeah, well, Steve returns.
I think he finished marking up the, uh...
You know, if there ever was a paper towel emergency, you'd be in trouble because they're like, zzz, blood comes out. It waits thirty seconds, zzz, and it comes out.
Everybody wanted the ones that you didn't have to touch.
There was.
This should be...
Anybody else want a wipe towel?
No, I'm good. Waiting on you guys.
All right, here. Okay.
Did you call me from Park Pion? Are they expecting you?
They're with the H D R V, they're in that upper little room.
Thank you.
Are you going there, too?
No.
Okay.
Well, that was fun. I'm gonna hang out with you cool kids.
Next is Resolution sixteen, two thousand nineteen, amending employee benefit package. Whereas the board of trustees, Village of Culture, desires to make certain revisions to the employee benefit package, and whereas the employee benefit package shall apply to full-time and part-time employees who are not otherwise party to a collective bargaining agreement, and whereas the new employee benefit package intends to make revisions to the existing employee benefit plan, including a change to Appendix A for licenses, applications, and stipends, and whereas, excuse me, after analysis and discussion, the trustee of the Village of Culture have determined that it would be in the best interest of the village to amend the employee benefit package that was effective June first, two thousand seventeen, and most recently amended September fourth, two thousand eighteen, changes stipend to, to the water and sewer superintendent to fifteen thousand annually, subject to conditions stipulated in the employee benefit package. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that a change to the Appendix A, to the employee benefit package attached here, two, as exhibited A, as exhibited, sorry, shall be effective as of June first, two thousand nineteen, for all eligible employees. Any discussion before we make a motion? I'll make a motion to amend Appendix A to the employee benefit package.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Veloto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Yes. What that actually is also is we, I think it was thirteen, it was some odd number, close to fourteen thousand, and we rounded it off to fifteen, and so it's just part of the new sewer, the sewer package that we offer. Which brings us to approval of compensation for Matt Krug. Matt Krug is the person that will be taking over for Greg in a month or so. He started working actually this week, so the compensation for Matt is thirty-six thou- yeah, thirty-six dollars and six cents an hour, which is seventy-five thousand a year and fifteen thousand dollar a year stipend. So, any discussion on that?
Yes, I think it should be noted that the probation period is being waived.
Oh, did I ask him? I thought he was gonna... But I don't, I'm not asking for the probation period to be waived. I don't think we should waive the probation period. I think we should waive the, the way that the probation reads is that the stipend isn't paid till after probation is over.
But that's what it says in the employee paperwork.
I know, and I thought that we were gonna change that, because I think we should, I don't want probation to be waived. I think that probation still should be a six months to a year, and, but I think that the stipend should be paid from the start of the job.
That's the way.
What's that?
That's the way.
Okay, then I'm gonna table this, and then we're gonna change that, because I'm not gonna, I, I'm not gonna have, I don't want Matt's paycheck not to be, and we'll have to do this, we'll have to have a special meeting or whatever. If we have to change and we need a resolution to the handbook, well, I think we should discuss it first. The way it reads now is the fifteen thousand dollar stipend is not paid until after probation. That could be up to a year, which means Matt will be making significantly less, and that's not what he agreed to. He's taking over position, the stipends for that position for a, for, you know, being the head, and he has responsibilities as the head of that department, so I don't know why he wouldn't get the stipend until after, you know, probation. We're hiring him to do a job, and he has, as two people that are gonna be under him, he has all the responsibilities, so why would we hold the stipend back?
I have a question. Does the, the stipend gets paid as he goes, mostly?
Yes.
As part as we...
Yes. Yeah, exactly.
Can we just make a motion that we will waive, we will pay the stipend and waive the probation? I mean, no, pay the stipend, keep the probation, but not, keep the probation, but not hold back the stipend. Can we just make that motion?
I, I think we can, I don't...
I, I don't think we can, because the employee handbook says that employee will become eligible to begin receiving stipends upon the successful completion of a probation period, if any, which is why I said, let's not have a probation period.
So, I understand what the, what that says now.
Okay, so we had a...
And I don't agree with that now. So, how do we change that? If people are in agreement, and I, I would find it really difficult to tell Matt he's not getting paid like a, you know, a set amount for the year, that he's gonna be on probation.
Okay, so what's the problem with waiving the probation?
Because I want, because we wanna have probation. If we waive probation and he's not good, there will not be no way to, you know, you know, that we can let him go.
You say, you're fired.
Well, well, maybe you don't have enough evidence to fire him at that point. It's harder to fire someone after probation than it is during probation.
I'm not sure that that's the case.
It is, because if there's someone's on there, I mean, right now, it could be, maybe he's not, you know, working that great, or, you know, maybe we're not thinking he's a hundred percent or whatever, whereas when you, once you have that job, then you have right, you know, you have more rights, I feel.
The other thing to consider, too, is consistency throughout our entire paperwork. It's, it's not fair to, to single out one person for a benefit of either not going through, not having a probation or...
or having, you know, being paid the stipend during his probation and other employees not.
Well, I think the only person that that would apply to would be, would be to Bugsy, who, you know, is already.
Well, yeah.
Already in. The other people we are also paying, C E Ls, which I know aren't stipends, but somebody, you know, why give them two dollars extra for something that, you know, that doesn't make sense to me either.
Sorry, the stipends are paid to the superintendent of water and sewer, highway superintendent, zoning building administrator, registrar, and budget officer. So there are five people that receive stipends. Any one of these people who are currently employed by the village could determine to retire or move away, and so we would be looking to place somebody new in that position, and we would be in the same situation of probation versus stipend.
Yeah. So I'm not saying to just change it for him, I'm trying, it's saying, it doesn't say, in the, in the handbook, it does not say specifically it's for the sewer and water, the person that's taking over that, it's general for stipends.
Stipends, yes.
Exactly, so if we change that, then it'll be changed for everyone.
So can we reword this?
But what is it that you want it to be changed to? That there is no probation period?
Okay, let me make it really, really, I'll make it really, really clear. There's fifteen thousand dollars that means that you have to have probation after year. I think we need probation. I think probation, there's a reason why there is probation, but I think we need to, we change it so that the fifteen thousand dollars is not held. I think those two can be separated.
Just connect the stipend from the probation.
Thank you.
I, I, I don't see what that, that, so what you're saying is there is no stipend?
No, I'm saying there is a.
The stipend gets paid.
The stipend gets paid every year.
Connected to the probation, it's not saying that.
If it's not connected, why not just put it in the salary?
Well, then if it's next, what, so why, why was the difference if after probation, there's still stipends, and we still pay stipends from here on? And it's not included in, and what that does is if it's a three percent raise or whatever it is during the year, you don't get that on the stipend. So we do have a stipend, and it's after the fact, so, so it doesn't make sense including it in the salary. It's totally, it's totally separate from the, from the probation. I mean, because once he reaches probation and then receives it, going forward, he's still gonna get fifteen thousand, just like the other five employees do.
But the point is, according to the handbook, they don't. They don't.
Right, and my point is, let's change the handbook, because I don't agree with that. So yes, the handbook right now says that, and unless God came down with tablets and told us that was it, then, you know, I think we can change it. We've changed other things. I don't see why you wouldn't pay, why wouldn't you pay somebody what he's worth? And, and for the responsibilities he's taking on, why would you hold fifteen thousand dollars back from?
This guy was hard to get. We're lucky.
I'm, I'm not arguing whether or not. It would seem to me that the probation period is when you determine whether or not he is capable of doing the job. That's what you have the purpose, that's the purpose of a probation period. And if at the end of the probation period, he has demonstrated, he or she has demonstrated that they are capable of performing the job to the satisfaction of the village, that's when they receive the stipend. The, as it turns out, the stipend is found in multiple places in the employee handbook, not just here. So if you wanna change the employee handbook, we can do that, but we've gotta look at the entire employee handbook and all the ca, and all the places where the stipend is.
And in talking to our attorney, I don't think that we have to, we can do a simple resolution, or we can just, we could vote on that, actually.
I, I'm not voting on it, sorry.
Well, you don't have to.
I, I.
I'm not going to vote on it now, but I'm, I'm not holding this back or voting on this and then taking away probation, and not that.
How long have you given the probation, have you?
It's usually, no, it's, it's a year if you don't stipulate. It's up to a year, according to Putnam County for positions, if it's not stipulated.
It is stipulated in the other portion of the handbook.
Yeah, I think it's six months.
Okay, I don't remember seeing that.
Extend it to as much as a year if you have to.
You can extend it, yes.
But I think we said six months, okay.
Okay, I don't remember seeing that, because I think we went through that before, so I'd like to see that too. Steve, how do you feel?
Well, are we allowed to waive probation?
Yes.
If you want to?
Yeah, but.
Why can't we just change? No, no, I don't want to waive probation. I agree with Dave, we need that to protect the village from, who knows, you know, until you get to know the person that's in the position. But, so why can't we just disconnect them at this time for this situation? Like, like you're suggesting, I agree with Dave, that, that this guy should get all his money, he was hard to find. And I, I don't wanna, you know, hold money back from.
And if we're hiring somebody, this, this stipend isn't connected to what, what he's, you know, isn't like, okay, you can do the job. If somebody's, if you're paying somebody, you know, to come on, you're paying him, you know, we're paying him ninety thousand dollars for paying somebody. And it's because of his credentials. And if he doesn't pan out, then, you know, then leave him. Because if you're gonna go by what he, if he's capable or not, why pay him seventy-five? Why don't we give him like ten thousand and say, okay, well, if you, you know, you're good enough, we'll pay seventy-five?
Well, also, when he was hired, was he, he wasn't, this wasn't disclosed to him that he wasn't gonna get his full paycheck?
Right, which could be, you know, you can blame that on me, I didn't, you know.
It's not your fault.
It is, it is, I didn't go through that.
Well, you know, he might be a little miffed by that.
Um, yeah, that's why.
Do we have, like, two, I mean, can we just make a motion to waive this clause for this particular, or to change this clause for this particular hire?
It's not just here, Fran, there's at least one other place in the employee handbook which discusses stipends.
Can we, can we get a change?
I, I don't understand why we just don't waive the probation period.
Because you want, well, I explained why. My thinking is someone's on probation, and I know that people do, I, just from being in my, and the work I'm in, if you have somebody and they're on probation, you know, they're, it's, once they become, once they're full-time, or they're locked into that job, it's, it's, it'll be really hard to get rid of somebody. I mean, you can't, right now, if they're, if they're, if you're on probation and someone's not, like, giving you a hundred percent or ninety, or they're not doing something, but it's not really significant, then you can get rid of them. But if they're, if they're doing that, once, once they're locked into a job, you can't get rid of them because of that. You can't say, well, you know, you're not giving us a hundred percent, or we don't like this, or we don't think this is gonna work. At that point, you're gonna have to come up with some solid reasons that I think are more significant than with someone's on probation.
In this position, we need solid reasons anyway, that's realistic, I mean, you know.
But we can't just waive, we can't just waive probation anyway, because it's in the handbook.
That's what I mean.
No, it says, in the handbook, it says that the village board can waive probation.
It says an employee will become eligible upon successful completion of a probationary period.
I guess it's in line.
If any.
Is that right?
It was the second email that I sent you. It's just in a different section.
What if we, uh, paid him fifteen thousand dollars more salary this year only? Would that be a?
That's gonna screw Michelle up, is that what I think?
This is the email that I sent you. So, section A, probation period, all new hires and new employees who are appointed to a new position will be subject to a probation period. The standard probation period will be for a period of six months. The probation period may be extended upon the recommendation of the person's immediate supervisor. Employee will be given written notice if his or her probation period is extended beyond this six months. An employee is not eligible to receive any approved, approved salary increases or stipends until the successful completion of a probation period, unless approved by the village board of trustees. Once the probation period is successfully completed, the individual will be entitled to receive any salary increases that have been approved for the fiscal year and/or stipend available for the position. An employee is only eligible to approve the, to receive the approved annual increase, if any, providing they are employed by the village at the time of the increase, right? Until the approved annual increase and/or stipend will not be retroactive.
Can you go back? You just read something that said, oh, about three or four sentences back, and it ended with, unless approved by the board of trustees.
So, second paragraph, an employee is not eligible to receive any approved salary increases or stipends unless the successful completion of a probation period, until, until the successful completion of a probation period, unless approved by the village board of trustees.
Right there. Doesn't that, doesn't that get us out of it?
Right there.
Yeah, it says unless.
Doesn't that get us out of it, right there? Employee is not eligible to receive a stipend or an increase.
Unless.
Successful completion of the probation period unless approved by the board of trustees. So can we use that clause and get out of, unless we approve that he's going to get a stipend even though he hasn't completed his probation?
Yeah, I think we should do it now.
Yeah, he's working, alright.
So, I will, I will make a motion that we separate or change, well, that we approve the stipend be included from day one of his employment, and that he remains on a six-month probation.
Second half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is approve the hiring of labor for highway, Jay Narak, or Narak, at the rate of eighteen dollars an hour. You will notice that that's two dollars more than our start. Mr. Narak, I interviewed with Bugsy, he comes with like, like forty years of mechanical skill and knowledge. And so we talked extensively about how the benefits of the village for that, and agreed that we should pay him eighteen dollars an hour. He was currently making seventeen ninety, working at a water supply shop or something. Seems like he has, has all the, you know, he's something we, we don't, we do not have any, any mechanics right now. They, they do what they can, but a lot of stuff gets shipped out, and so I think it's well worth it, so that's the reason for the two-dollar increase. So I'll make a motion to hire Jay Narak at the rate of eighteen dollars an hour as labor for highway department.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, sorry, 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 discussion?
And how long will his probation period be?
I said, I said six months.
Six months.
We can extend it to one year also. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, let's see, approve the renewal of workers' compensation insurance, effective seven, uh, for July first, nineteen, two thousand nineteen. This is a bit more than we paid last year. Jeff explained that we could go back to, I think it was a perm, a grandma, perma, but, uh, Karen advised not to do that, going back and forth to insurance companies.
It looks like it's less.
We just changed last year.
What's that?
It looks like it's less than last year.
It's less than last year.
It's less than last year, but, uh, perma thinks less than that.
It's, it's in a twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred dollars left.
But thi, this is.
Right.
Three thousand less than last year, okay, gotcha.
So, um, I'll make a motion to renew workers' compensation insurance.
Four, COMP.
Yes, sorry. And what was the number on that? We should.
Sixty thousand nine twenty-four. Sixty thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get all that, Michael, or you probably have it in the, your paperwork anyway?
Yes, I got it. You made a motion to renew, Fran seconded, and you all said yes.
No, to that, for that company, though.
Oh, I didn't catch the name of the company.
Alliance. C O M P, and then last was Alliance.
Thank you.
And the amount is sixty thousand nine twenty-four per year.
Now I got it.
Okay, thank you. Next is request from Sandy Gaila for a letter of support for the spent nuclear fuel bill. Thank you for taking the time to consider writing a letter of support for my bill, A dot four, five four zero four. This bill is an act to amend the real property tax law to tax spent, to tax spent nuclear fuel rods that will be stored at any point indefinitely after the plant closed in two thousand twenty. I've attached a PDF of the full bill to this email. Unfortunately, we do not have a sample letter of support for you to potentially base your, base yours off of. However, with the end of the session rapidly approaching, we would really appreciate anything you can produce. If you had support, a bill similar to this in the past, an updated version suffice as well. Assemblywoman Gaila believes in the influence and powers of local government. We believe this letter will help tremendously in getting this legislation passed, and is simply. I'll ask Jeff to do that? Or is everyone feelings on that?
Fine.
Yeah, I'd like to support that.
So, do we have to move anything on, I'll ask Jeff for. Next request, um, request from Putnam Wine and Food Fest to Hank Banner that the other Main Street, Mayor's Park. Discussion?
When does he wanna start?
When, when is it?
August, August tenth and eleventh, I believe.
And is this the, the lady?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
She wants to put a banner up on Main Street?
Yeah, I have no idea where, or if it's maybe hanging down at the foot of Main, I think it was the foot of Main, she's a.
Between two poles.
I don't, don't know.
I don't agree with that. I don't, I don't mind her putting a banner on the fence at Mayor's Park, maybe the week before, similar to what we gave John Sheer. But other than that, I don't see putting anything on the street.
No.
And then, um, she's also, is it possible to use the restroom for Stefan Artis at the park? I'm not sure what she's talking about. Does she want the?
Well, is she not getting the pavilion?
Isn't she dockside? I'm sorry, isn't she Mayor's Park?
She's Mayor's Park, right.
So they're just using field and not the pavilion?
I don't remember. That's what it sounds like, but I don't remember. I, I would say no, unless they're renting it.
They're renting the pavilion.
So.
They're gonna need facilities anyway, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but, yeah, so check with, I'll check with Brett and find out if they're, if they're using the pavilion.
Yeah.
I, I would beg you to say no on a banner on Main Street.
I would agree with you, yeah.
And maybe a week before for a banner on the fence.
Right.
And it has to have wooden slants?
Yes.
Steve in?
Yeah, I, I agree. No banner on Main Street. She can put one up a week before at Mayor's Park, and, uh, yeah, if she wants to rent the pavilion, then they can use it, but.
I would assume she's gonna be bringing in facilities.
Yeah, they'll have to. They're not good enough for the staff.
I guess not.
Yeah, she hasn't been in those bathrooms since. I'd rather have a porter, John, anything.
So you're with us on this, Steve?
Yes, exactly what Lynn said.
Do we need a motion on that, or?
Well, we need to do a little bit more finding out about whether or not they're.
Okay. Okay, we can tell Jeff that.
I'll, I'll give him the input first.
Yep. Okay, uh, next is Resolution fourteen, two thousand nineteen, opposing the Dan Scammer build-out project, or build-out proposals. Short, so I'll read it. Whereas the Village of Culture is supporting the community choice aggregation program, which allows municipalities to purchase energy with the goal of lowering energy bills and increasing access to clean renewable resources. And whereas the Dan Scammer project will use fossil fuels, which is in opposition to the village's goal, and whereas the result of the project is a plant which will release pollutants such as methane, carbon dioxide, and carbon dioxide into the air, which will cause health risks such as pulmonary disease and more, and will accelerate. and will accelerate, accelerate climate changes. And whereas while the expansion of Dan Skammer plant would create jobs, the implementation of clean renewable energy sources such as solar and wind could decelerate climate change and create even more jobs than the Dan Skammer plant. And whereas while carbon fees and other programs designed to reduce emissions could cause consistent operation to be too expensive, capacity charges on all Central Hudson rate payers will continue throughout the plant's lifetime for forty or more years. Therefore, be resolved that the Ego's or Cold Spring Board of Trustees calls upon Public Service Commission to reject Dan Skammer application. Discussion?
I sent everyone sometime early this afternoon, I think, an email with some points that I had discussed on this. Points I had discussed with Dan Skammer and also with a nuclear engineer that I knew. Partly because of what we were getting, what people were presenting to us, while I agree a part of it. I don't think it's, you know, like you're gonna get facts and non-facts on all sides of this issue. And I wasn't totally convinced that what we were getting was, was totally factual. I don't know if any of you have that time to read, but I sent it was, it was just basically some questions and answers and some points. I don't totally agree that everything we've been fed on this is totally true, so I wanted to go to the source. I would recommend that you guys take a look at it. I don't know if it's gonna change your vote, but I would tend not to vote on this. To vote no, did you read it?
I read it.
Okay.
Steve?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to comment on this?
On, on the, on her comments, or on?
No, on the resolution, or you can on the comments also.
No, well, I'm, I'm.
I hope you clean up the mess here.
Thank you. I did read those points that Ray brought, but I, I disagree with many of them. And I think they, they came from an industry guy who was a nuclear.
Well, I, I understand that.
Scientist, and of course, he, he thinks nuclear power's okay, which I disagree with. So I wouldn't really tend to agree with most of the things. I did understand that we don't have a, you know, we don't have a total replacement for, for our current energy system. But building a four hundred million dollar, that's where they're starting at, build out of this dance conference thing. And it's, you know, it's just going in the wrong direction. And its location doesn't make any sense in the Hudson River, basically. Why don't they build one somewhere where it's not gonna flood? You know what I mean? There's, there's just a bunch of things that.
Yeah, I mean, good.
That, that I.
I mean, they are raising the new plants so that it shouldn't be flooding. But building a new one when they already have one there is, is.
Why can't they build one somewhere else where it's not in the flood zone? So anyway, uh, I'm, uh, I'm prepared to stand behind us, the resolution fourteen to one night, opposing the dance comment.
Luke?
I have not had a chance to read the information that, that Fran emailed to us. However, I don't believe that the plan for this dance, Dan Skammer plant is a good one. I do not believe that using fracked gas is a good idea either for Pennsylvania or the, or states in the center of the country. I think it's harmful there, and if we use it here, then we're contributing to harm in people's backyards elsewhere in the country. And I think we should do the responsible thing. Regarding nuclear power, I mean, I'm not as against it as most people are. However, um, I'm, I think we need to take whatever steps we can to deal with the climate crisis. And building this plant is a step in the wrong direction. So I'm for this resolution. And, yeah, that's it.
Ready?
Yeah, Fran, I apologize, I've not had a chance to read through the entire email. However, one of the points that Dan Skammer made, which raised my awareness, is that fracked gas constitutes approximately ninety percent of the natural gas used in the United States. And is, fracked gas is what is provided by Central Hudson for homes and businesses in the counties in which they do business. I was just surprised by that.
It was true.
Certainly, the original part of your, your email.
And I, and I understood.
I'm sorry, man.
It seemed to me it was a, um, there are positive things about the plant expansion such as using cooling towers as opposed to using, uh, that's a river of water to cool, uh, the plant. Although it would be in operation significantly more hours a day than the current plant. The use of energy, sorry. The way in which the plant operates, the proposed way in which the plant operates will actually result in a reduced energy usage for the plant than the current plant does. So you get more, like, more power at a ratio of lower, lower energy use. That all seemed very positive. I didn't get the sense from the first portion of the email that the writer was for or against.
I mean, I also, I, I threw it at him when we, when this first came to the board. I sent him a fast email saying, could you look at this and tell me what I'm supposed to be looking at here? Because I had no clue.
Right.
And it was a fast, he looked at Dan Skammer, he looked at the thing, and that was his response. And it was not, it was not an in-depth response.
But it was a very informed, it was a very informed response, it was very.
I am, though.
The Dan Skammer response, which is what one would expect.
Right, oh, okay.
We're gonna do good.
Mm-hmm.
This is gonna be a, a good thing for you. It, it may be more knowledgeable, but I'm afraid it didn't sway me away from my thinking, right, break me wrong.
Which, which, I mean, I don't expect to, from my own personal, I needed to know more about it than I was getting from people that I wasn't sure were qualified to give, not everyone that we were getting hearing from were qualified to give the information. They were getting bits and pieces from, from everyone else.
Right.
And, you know, giving it back to us. And so I wanted to at least get some people that, I mean, I'm not saying Dan Skammer, everything that Dan Skammer said, I'm gonna, you know, agree with. Because obviously, they want to do this.
They're selling, yes, they're selling it, right.
Dope.
But I, I, I guess I, I land on the side where I would propose to do the build-out. But this, this was incredibly helpful. Thank you very much for doing that research.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm against the, against the project. I just think anything that's involving fracking or can use fracking, I'm totally against. I need to go no further than that. You know, some of the arguments, you know, that it will cause, you know, pulmonary diseases and carbon, whatever. That may be true, and it might be true about everything, you know, I don't know. There's a, I, I don't like definitive statements like that. Anyway, but I really, the fracking is, is just something I just can't get past. And, and also I think that when they're closing down the, you know, Indian Point, that they had to take into consideration how much energy was in the area and how much was needed. And they weren't, I'm sure they weren't just gonna cut this off and not have any energy supply to the area for, for the foreseeable future. I would imagine if they did, then I would say our representatives are really doing their job. Because, uh, you know, unless they were making a deal with Dan Skammer that will build this and that'll be the out, which also would give me a little pause, but, uh.
Well, it wasn't really presented as the replacement for Indian Point either.
Right, but I mean, if that's gonna be used as a, that we don't have, if we don't have a fallback or whatever after that, that that, this is what that would be. That's kind of the feeling I got from them. Might not have represented that in a definitive way, but I think that's kind of the thought. So I, but again, even, you know, there has been representation that there, there is no need for this or an expansion on this. You know, and I would think that the proof of that kind of is that if, you know, everyone was doing their research and we have representatives worth anything, that they would have, you know, they wouldn't have closed Indian Point without having any kind of backup. So I'd be against it. So, um, so I have a motion to approve the opposition of Dan Skammer build-out proposal. Have a second?
I'll second.
Steve?
Roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
No.
Uh, trustee Vlota?
Yes.
Mayor Mirandey?
Uh, yes. Thank you. For your research. Yeah, no, I, I hear you. If you get one side that doesn't, it's against it or whatever. Uh, next is request to remove Central Hudson-laid Butterfield entrance. There were a number of emails asking everyone to stop by or take a ride by. I don't know if everyone had, I know a number of you have. I have. So, uh, discussion on that?
I, I sent everyone an email. I took, um, as it turns out, almost all of the lighting on that stretch of road from the begin, from the bridge to, um, the drop-off area is on the west side of Route Nine D. The only light currently on the east side of Route Nine D is the light that we're talking about, uh, removing. As, when we originally discussed it, that light has an arm that projects over Route Nine D and provides lighting of the roadbed. In my opinion, when I, when I drove by that night, the two Butterfield lights, which are lower and do not project at all, they're very upright. It doesn't seem to provide significant lighting at all to the roadbed. So I would, my, you know, I'm the cheapest person on this, at this table.
I don't think so.
You don't think I'm cheap, okay.
I'd say you were the cheapest.
I, I would love to save the money from one streetlight, but I think it's a necessary streetlight.
Isn't it interfering with their, with their front entrance, like the location of the pole?
They could stay. I'm sure it's not ideal aesthetically.
That's all it is, though. It's not in their way technically.
No, right now.
Doesn't seem like it.
Right now it's up and it's to one side of the, uh.
Yeah.
On the north side, right, at the, the driveway?
I don't know. It seems dim through there anyway. I think if anything, put it across the street, shining down, uh, on the next pole across the street. And that would be moving it, but I think that would actually provide, now we have an extra light in one spot, basically.
There's additional light.
Yeah, that's really, it, it.
Right, for pedestrians.
It's pretty dark through there.
For pedestrians, it's good.
Yeah.
All, all of the lighting, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It, it is a dark stretch.
It is, especially when you go past heading south, where all those trees are on the, if you're heading south on the left side of the road, it gets a lot darker. And those trees actually shade the lights that are there a lot, so that's, you know, it's pretty dark through there. I think we could use another streetlight there anyway.
Oh, God, no, don't.
Yeah, I wonder what they're doing with it. Well, because as you come into town, it's really dark right there.
Yes.
And when you're in a car and your lights are on?
Yeah, and you're going sixty because you went over a bridge. You don't know where you are, it's not a close break.
I found it with those two there at that entrance and the other ones there just, just, I guess, west of that, I guess. I, I just found it adequate. I don't know who's walking over there, but as far as roadbed goes, I think it's fine because you have vehicle lights on, but.
See, that's the problem. I never looked at it till I looked at it. So now I noticed it.
I'm for having it taken down if they want to.
Yeah, I never got a chance to get over there, so I'm gonna, you know.
I like the idea of keeping the roadbed lit, but I would like Butterfield to be a whole lot less bright than it is. I mean, it's just.
I think it's true.
It's ridiculous. I mean, there's so much light out.
I think so.
But it doesn't really help anything. It certainly doesn't help the road. So I'd be kind of opposed to removing this light, but I, I don't know. I don't really feel one way or, there's a lot of light there anyway. But I think it's just too much. But the roadbed should be lit better than it is.
So kind of as a compromise, I think we could ask them if they could put it, locate it, another light on the opposite side of the street? If there's a pole there that doesn't have a light?
I don't, I don't know that they.
There is a pole there. It's, it's kind of at a diagonal, north or south, I forget which way. But it's kind of across from the opening.
The central, some cables on both sides of the street.
Yeah, the lines are on the other side of the street, actually. I don't know how they get to that one. That's the only way.
I think the wireless goes over to it.
So you want on both sides? Is that what you said?
No, move across the street. Remove that one if, if, I, I'm, I'm in favor of just removing it totally. But if it's a toss-up and you need more light bed, you know, light on the roadbed, then I would say you could put it on the other pole.
Who would do that?
Well, it would be Butterfield.
There's a cost.
Butterfield would have to pay, no? Okay, then I'm all for that.
Thoughts? I don't, I don't know. Fran does, so there's kind of two, if it sounds like or one way and two the other. They're, I don't know. Do you want to take a ride by and we'll just table it? And it'll be all up to you, Fran.
Yep. All right.
Well, we got Steve saying move it?
Yeah, move across the street.
Okay, and Lynn saying there's too much light at Butterfield, but not on the road.
She means because of the condos and everything.
All the light from Butterfield doesn't do anything to help the sidewalk or the road. So I think moving the streetlight across the street is a good idea. But also requesting that they dim their lights at Butterfield a little bit.
Okay, I'm, I'm for moving it if that's an option. So we'll run it by them. I'll see if, is everyone for that or?
You've got a majority.
Yeah.
If Butterfield pays for it.
Yes, it's bothering them that way.
Do we need a motion on that or anything, or just, do we just make a phone call and see if they're willing to move it before we do anything?
Just make the phone.
What's that?
Just make the phone.
Okay. Okay, I think we're getting into some easy stuff now, maybe.
Okay.
Less controversial.
I would like to move to approve batch number fifty-one sixty-two for the amount of twenty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars from fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen.
I'll second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I move to approve batch fifty-one sixty-three for an amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixteen cents that's applied to fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty.
I'll second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of minutes, trustee workshop meeting five twenty-eight nineteen. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're gonna be going to executive session to discuss proposed acquisition, sale of the real property.
Before that, I have some stuff.
Okay. Go ahead, yeah, sorry.
I'm gonna hand out these wet documents to you guys. They had to, they're fast one, no, you take two.
No, take two.
Take two.
Take two, call me in the morning.
Yep. One of them's a little damp. So last, uh, last week I went to a meeting at a town hall with Richard Che and Jewel. The people from Jewel are CCA people. And they were informing us about a, um, an option within the CCA that you have to opt into, unlike the CCA which is, you're automatically enrolled into. It's called Community Solar. So there's a organization that, that, um, Jewel, Nexamp, they're called. And basically they're, Jewel has contracted directly with these people. They're solar energy producers, that's all they, and their business is to try and expand solar in New York State. So within the CCA, you can opt into this program, which will provide you, you'll pay directly for energy that has only been created through solar energy. It is actually cheaper somehow. Don't ask me how to explain that, but it is. And there's only like a thousand spots currently available. And as people enroll in it, more spots will open in this organization. Nexamp will keep investing in either partially finished solar air sites or actually fine sites in western New York State where the farming is, you know, a lot of open farmland there and start building specifically solar arrays to create more energy. And they're gonna sell it through this market exclusively. And because of our CCA, we were allowed to. And because of our CCA, we are allowed to, to come to them with, with a significant number of people. And, uh, you know, and they're interested in working with us. So that paper I handed you is, uh, something, stuff they gave me, I don't have one anymore, it went, it got destroyed. But, uh, basically it's an example of, uh, your press release and, uh, mailing if we wanna go to the expense, which I don't know if we're going or not, uh, describing this meeting we're gonna have at Town Hall sometime in the middle of July to kind of launch this whole thing. We're trying to get people to show up, show support for it. And they're gonna be doing this in the other CCA places as well, but we decided to use Town Hall because we thought more people, we, we have more room for more people, so, um, we wanted to get that out through Facebook or mail or maybe put, put an article, I mean, an ad in the, in the two papers.
Steve, wouldn't this be confusing to people who are still somewhat confused by the CCA?
It might be, that's why we're doing this outreach thing.
But this, this letter, dear village resident.
It really doesn't, it doesn't touch on the CCA and like, don't be confused, it doesn't, it's not speaking to that, it's just.
Well, we can rewrite it, this is just what they gave us.
I really think it'd be speak, rewritten, I mean, I'm fine, I agree with Maria, I'm gonna be confused as hell.
Right, well, you can see that that's Jewel gave me that, so you can see their approaches, they already know everything about it.
Yeah, they gotta come.
Yeah, they're gonna break it down to our level.
Can they put this off till like mid-August when people have already settled?
Well, they're gonna do it more than once, so they just, that's, the decision was made that, uh, that, this would be like a kickoff meeting, this is just the start of it all.
So who does it, who does it go to? Who does this letter?
That, well, the town will be sending that letter, either sending an actual letter describing that out or put an ad in the paper for it, which would probably be way more, uh, definitely cheaper and smarter thing to do. Put it on Facebook, uh.
Is the town, is the town moving ahead with this or not?
Yeah, well, we're gonna do it at their location, Richard's behind it all.
And on, and on a certain date?
We haven't chosen a day yet, but it's gonna be in mid-July and we're gonna, I'll have that date this week and then we can.
I mean, I think if we send something out or, it's just, it's a meeting, so I, I think it really has to be a, a more personal meeting saying.
Here's what we're going.
If you weren't confused enough.
Yeah, we're gonna try to help.
Yeah, well, seven twenty-four, which is a Wednesday, is the date that we ended up with, so, um, I can rewrite this thing and then we can put it on a.
I think it really has the touch, this, what we just did and how, why, you know.
There was a CCA and you weren't given a chance to sign up.
This is an opt-in, this is gonna be for, uh, Community Solar, it's a, it's a, it's a movement that's, it's not just for Jewel, this is like.
It doesn't mention Community Solar at all.
Right, I, we're gonna have to rewrite it.
It, it talks about the Hudson Valley Community Power, which is not an organization that I think I recognize.
And would there be, if, if you opt into this, is there a guarantee like we have with, with?
Yeah.
There is.
They're signing up for, I don't know how much cheaper, I don't know if subsidized to New York State somehow or something.
And that's why there's the limited amount of spaces or else I would say right away, well, why didn't they just go total solar in the beginning?
Well, they, they're, this is their way of, I assume, testing, testing that interest.
People reading this, it would be, my first thing would be, okay, you just got the lowest places you could, but now this is lower.
Well, but it's solar only.
I know, but.
But it's not enough to supply the whole CCA.
So I think that needs to be clear.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Okay.
Not sure if everyone else is going to.
Well, I can rewrite this thing so that.
I think it should be a way.
So I can understand it.
I think it needs to differentiate, not differentiate, but recently contacted you about the CCA and you could opt in, you could opt out or stay in. Now we're coming to you with a further initiative, which is going to provide lower cost solar power for a limited number of customers. And, and, um, this is part of the CCA?
It is.
It is not?
It is.
It is.
It's through Jewel.
It, it, well, through Jewel.
Hey, this is another provider they found that's solar only, but because of this arrangement they've made with Nexamp is just a limited number and then they'll, they'll judge the interest, which is gonna be significant, I think, in it and how much more they invest and doing more and more. But it's really kind of like, this is just happening now, this is like taking off, so.
One of the, one of the, I, I think, one of the characteristics of the CCA power that was offered is that it's, it, you're going to have the same failure or non-failure rate with the CCA providing power as you have with the Central Hudson, um, the power that is provided by Central Hudson now. So that seems to me to be an essential element of convincing anybody that this is something that they want to do. That it's the same wires, it should be the same bill, and you'll have the same, um, availability that you currently have with your Central Hudson service.
Okay, that's a good.
This should have been part of the initial offer, the same way.
This came along after.
Yeah, I know, the same way that we had the, you know, you're in this one unless you opt out before, you can pick this one, which is a little bit cheaper. Or a third option, you could have the solar.
Yeah, but not everybody could get that.
No, no, but not gonna get a thousand.
But like ten years from now, everybody, probably most of the CCAs will be, if they keep investing in solar, a good portion of local ones anyway, uh, will have a lot more solar in them. Because people are starting to invest in that, you know, people that have the, the means to spend, you know, a couple hundred million dollars on a solar array or whatever. Which we could do with the Danzkeber, right? Four hundred million right there, you could build a massive array with that.
We need to find a place to put it, a solar farm.
Take a stab at rewriting?
Yeah, I will, but anyway, but I don't think we should mail it because.
No, we're not mailing it.
No, we're not mailing it.
Is town going to put this in the paper?
They are, so we both are.
So we are.
We just have to let it know it's an initiative for both the town and the village.
Yeah, for our CCA and we're having, we're joining together with the town to, to put on the.
But I wouldn't put it on, I wouldn't give it to the press until there's more definition, more explanation.
I'll take care of it. I'll email you guys what I write and then if you like it, I'll disseminate it, yeah, you guys.
All right, sounds good.
I'll write it in crayon.
How do you do that online?
That's not easy.
Uh, one other thing, I had, uh, I had sent you on email with a recommendation about the waterfront consistency law and the composition of the committee that will implement the water consistency law. And of course, a waterfront consistency law is a required element of any local waterfront revitalization program. So, um, I, I, I got feedback from Fran, which I responded to, and I got feedback from Lynn. Um, I haven't gotten. Right, and, and yes, the planning board is important, yes.
Yeah.
Steve, I haven't gotten any response from you.
I haven't, when, when are we? Do you have a deadline on this, when you want it?
I'm sorry.
Do you have a deadlines, when you want it?
Um, sure, tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, okay. ASAP?
As soon as you can.
I, I had to print it all up on paper so that I could read it.
Okay.
It's basically giving the, uh, review, uh, to the, to the planning board who have agreed to do it. So, you know, if they're gonna agree to do it, they're closest to it, I think.
I agree, I was, I read the email.
And I think that's the basis for it, like, so I think it's a, a no-brainer.
Well, Matt was willing to do it anyway.
Oh, no, no, I, I talked to him.
Can we vote on this?
Guess we're mad here. Are they down in Memphis? When you voted, are they?
I don't think so.
I think, I think.
Rec is, Rec is down.
Who?
Rec.
Rec is down more.
CUC is down.
Two.
We met that, somebody we met, uh, at the.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, we have to go, I don't get her name, but, um, new, new residents in the village and she, she seemed to be anxious to get involved in something once she got her feet on the ground. And she's, so I was pointing her to us, all the good boys we have.
So, anything else? Sorry, I didn't think of that. Um, so yeah, as I was saying, we're gonna go executive session, um, and when we come out, we will just, we're not gonna be doing any, any more work here. We'll just, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Do we want to open to public comment?
Excuse me?
Do we want to ask for public?
Anyone from public wanna comment? Sorry, thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, um, I'm Tara Balmos, I just wanna thank you guys for, uh, really doing due diligence and considering Danzkeber resolution. And thank you for passing it and, um, uh, if you would consider sending me the information that they sent you, I don't know if you would or not, but if you would, I'd be really interested to, like, I, I feel like I'm, before coming out opposed to it, I really tried to dig in and, and learn all I could about it because we do need to get power from somewhere.
If you, if you don't see it, there's, you should.
I can, I can email you, yeah. And also just, my son wanted to come tonight, but we had a pet that died today.
Well, I'd also like to commend Dana for his wonderful email and his, his thoughts and.
Yes.
You know, just the additional information that he sent us and his reasoning. I thought he was remarkably eloquent in his presentation.
And the fact that he came and sat through a whole meeting and waited to say that he was very good.
Yeah, and it's really gratifying to see you involved in.
Yeah.
The public management of our community, I think it's wonderful.
He, he was, um, very heartened by you guys taking him seriously and asking for his comments to be mailed in, so thank you. Tell him to keep it up. Run away, proceed, this can be a big thing to say.
Motion.
Is this the?
Budget, I think, it's all.
Okay.
Motion to, uh, to executive session.
Second.
Go on favor.
Aye.
Who made the motion, who's second?
Dave made it.
I'm ready.
And.
Murray.
Murray.
Laurie.
You.
Yo.
Donnie and Murray.
Amy and Murray.
Chief Murray.
Thrifty, I said.